Welcome to Murfreesboro City Council. It is April 7th, 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Councilmember Sean Wright has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, bow his head. Heavenly Father, thank you for the continued blessings on the city of Murfreesboro. Please be with those that have spoken in unspoken prayers. Heal those that need your healing, and please pray for Rick. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would like to have, before we get into ceremonial items, would like to make one quick announcement and then ask for a moment of silence. We were all shocked on Monday to learn of the passing of Miles Tate. Melinda Tate has worked in our Parks and Recreation Department for many years, but really going back, this will be the 15th year of our Murfreesboro Half Marathon. And Miles and Melinda Tate were the sole reason that we started and we've been able to continue that. Miles was 62, and Miles was, again, really the only reason that we've got that race and continue to have that race, and he was very active. So tomorrow morning at 6:30, for all the runners or walkers, we're sort of spontaneously gonna meet at, here in the Civic Plaza outside of our council chambers, and we're gonna leave from here, and we're gonna run up Main Street and run back in a celebration of life of Miles. And you have to know Miles, but at the end of every run, Miles would drink a glass of chocolate milk. And so Davis Young and Murfreesboro Milk have graciously donated 100 pints of chocolate milk. It'll be here tomorrow morning for everybody to finish. So we want to invite everyone tomorrow to come out, whether you want to run or walk or just hang out at 6:30 in the morning, but to be able to celebrate the Tate family, specifically Miles, for all they've done in their community, or in our community. So if you will, bow with me for a few seconds, for a moment of silence for the Tate family. Amen. All right, we have several ceremonial items, so I'm gonna go, come down and read our proclamations. Jenny, if y'all, Andrea, if y'all want to come up? For the last several months, the Rutherford, the Rutherford Arts Alliance has been really working with not only the city, but with our City TV3, and we've had lots of different interviews, we've had lots of different, I want to say documentaries almost, that have been really telling about different stories in Murfreesboro. So it's my pleasure to present a proclamation. It says, "Whereas the Rutherford Arts Alliance is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit group created in 2018 with a mission to advocate for all aspects of our cultural community, promote Rutherford County as a cultural and heritage community and destination, communicate the social and economic impact of the arts, create opportunities for networking, collaboration, education, and economic success, and define current arts gaps and create a united front to address these gaps in our community. And whereas Rutherford Art Alliance's purpose is connecting creative and, excuse me, is connecting the creative in our community, partnering with individuals and organizations from a wide representation of government, education, business, wellness, and beyond, is foundational to success, and these successes elevate our community. And whereas Rutherford Arts Alliance has worked in partnership with the city of Murfreesboro to expand public arts resources and connections, as public art is an indicator of a vibrant city, and the arts contribute towards economic strength and quality of life. And whereas the Rutherford Arts Alliance, through its Leading Ladies of Rutherford County history, Show Women Who Inspire Us, has also commissioned an original community-involved play, A Party of Twelve by Mary Donnette Johnson. This play will premiere in the Washington Theater at Patterson Park Community Center on the weekend of April 8th through the 10th. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim on behalf of the city council, April 8th through the 10th, 2022, to recognize Leading Ladies of Rutherford County, and urge all of our citizens to join me in this worthy recognition." (APPLAUSE) All right. Seth, you got a group who wants to come up?
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, council members. First of all, we want to do the proclamation for National Telecommunicator Week next week, but also want to recognize Becky. Becky has been, we're proud to announce that Communications Coordinator Becca Green has been chosen to represent our center as the 911 telecommunicator of the year for 2022. Becky has not only been a source of calm for our center, but also a source of resiliency. Anyone can call on Becky for advice, laugh, or assistance, a laugh, a hug, and she is graciously willing to give it. She is a, she has a true servant's heart and cares deeply about our coworkers in our communications center. In addition to her responsibilities as Operations Coordinator, she's helped out with all tech duties and also helped launch our peer support program this past year. She regularly checks on coworkers and offers resources to assist them through any challenging they're going through personally, professionally. Becky has been with our center for over 17 years. She continuously strives to improve our center, helps out where and when is needed and without being asked, and she's always willing to answer a question or help troubleshoot a problem. She's very much deserving of this recognition, so appreciate it. (APPLAUSE)
So with that, it's my pleasure to read you a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call the Murfreesboro Emergency Communications Center for help. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators provide a vital link for our police officers and firefighters by providing them the information and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Murfreesboro Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her duties in the past year. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim April 10th through the 16th, 2022, to observe National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and ask all citizens to join me in expressing our appreciation to the city of Murfreesboro's emergency communications personnel for their hard work and dedication. (APPLAUSE) All right. Seth, you got a group who wants to come up? Sure, absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. First of all, we want to do the proclamation for National Telecommunicator Week next week, but also want to recognize Becky. Becky has been, we're proud to announce that Communications Coordinator Becca Green has been chosen to represent our center as the 911 telecommunicator of the year for 2022. Becky has not only been a source of calm for our center, but also a source of resiliency. Anyone can call on Becky for advice, laugh, or assistance, a laugh, a hug, and she is graciously willing to give it. She is a, she has a true servant's heart and cares deeply about our coworkers in our communications center. In addition to her responsibilities as Operations Coordinator, she's helped out with all tech duties and also helped launch our peer support program this past year. She regularly checks on coworkers and offers resources to assist them through any challenging they're going through personally, professionally. Becky has been with our center for over 17 years. She continuously strives to improve our center, helps out where and when is needed and without being asked, and she's always willing to answer a question or help troubleshoot a problem. She's very much deserving of this recognition, so appreciate it. (APPLAUSE)
So with that, it's my pleasure to read you a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Murfreesboro, and Councilman Wade had asked to make sure that we recognize this young And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call the Murfreesboro Emergency man at council tonight. So I think our team has put together a video that they want to play before we have them Communications Center for help. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens come up.
I'm Hagan Williams, I'm 11 years old, and I am in fifth grade.
have with emergency services. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators provide a vital link for our police officers
A Murfreesboro resident, Hagan Williams, has been playing and learning the game of
and firefighters by providing them the information and ensuring their safety.
golf with his dad for years. He had a dream to play in the drive, chip, and putt competition held at Augusta National
And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Murfreesboro Emergency Communications
Golf Club the week before the Masters Tournament.
Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of
The competition is broadcasted live on the Golf Channel, but to get there, Hagan had
fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and
to win locally in the subregional and regional to qualify.
When we signed up, we were just, just gonna see if I would make it to just like
professionalism during the performance of his or her duties in the past year. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the
the subregional. I didn't think I was gonna have a chance to win, but my dad was just go out there and
entire city council, do hereby proclaim April 10th through the 16th, 2022, to observe
do what you can do and do your best and just have fun with it.
National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and ask all citizens to join me in expressing
When Hagan found out he qualified to go to Augusta, Georgia, this was his reaction.
our appreciation to the city of Murfreesboro's emergency communications personnel for their
I nearly started crying, but I didn't cry though, but my mom dead.
hard work and dedication. (APPLAUSE) All right. Seth, you got a group who wants to come up?
My dad, he was holding, he was holding it up.
Sure, absolutely.
And then out of Augusta, when we prayed and everything, he started bawling up tears and
Good evening, Mayor, council members. First of all, we want to do the proclamation for National Telecommunicator Week next week,
everything.
So how did Hagan feel being the only player representing the whole state of Tennessee?
but also want to recognize Becky. Becky has been, we're proud to announce that Communications Coordinator Becca Green has
I thought that was pretty amazing that I was the only one from Tennessee to make it.
been chosen to represent our center as the 911 telecommunicator of the year for 2022.
And his reaction arriving at Augusta National Golf Club.
They showed us into Magnolia Lane, and then when we got out, we got to walk across
Becky has not only been a source of calm for our center, but also a source of resiliency.
it to the chipping green, which that was really cool, it was beautiful when we went
Anyone can call on Becky for advice, laugh, or assistance, a laugh, a hug, and she is
through.
graciously willing to give it.
Hagan's strategy with the three golf skills, driving, chipping, and putting.
She is a, she has a true servant's heart and cares deeply about our coworkers in our
We were really trying to get my drives, like just get it as straight as possible,
communications center. In addition to her responsibilities as Operations Coordinator, she's helped out with all tech
focused on like my spin and everything and how I can control it.
duties and also helped launch our peer support program this past year.
And then we tried to get my speeds and my putts dialed in, and the first one, I was
She regularly checks on coworkers and offers resources to assist them through any challenging
trying my best to make it, but I'm glad it hit the hole because I think it would have
they're going through personally, professionally.
went over.
Becky has been with our center for over 17 years.
I got kind of lucky on that one.
Hagan Williams from Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
She continuously strives to improve our center, helps out where and when is needed and without
Skinny, nickname's skinny. Hagan placed second overall and was awarded his trophy from golf great Fred Couples.
being asked, and she's always willing to answer a question or help troubleshoot a
The obvious question, was there a Tiger Woods sighting?
problem. She's very much deserving of this recognition, so appreciate it.
I could hear all these like yelling, "Tiger, tiger." And then he came through, and then once he went on the putting green, everyone just
(APPLAUSE)
So with that, it's my pleasure to read you a proclamation for National Public Safety
came in and was videoing. It was really cool because I've never seen him before.
The city of Murfreesboro and the Murfreesboro City Council congratulate Hagan Williams
Telecommunicators Week. Whereas an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters,
for proudly representing his family and the city at the Masters Drive-Chip &amp; Put Event.
and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property.
Way to go, Hagan.
So Hagan, Chad, Jaclyn, if y'all want to come up, we're gonna get a picture made, And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call the Murfreesboro Emergency Communications Center for help. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens but Chad, then want to ask if you want to recognize, I know you have a familiar face have with emergency services. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators provide a vital link for our police officers here as a grandparent that you may want to recognize. and firefighters by providing them the information and ensuring their safety.
Yeah. This is my wife, Jaclyn, my son, Hagan, London, and our grandparents, John and Debbie
And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Murfreesboro Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of
Harney.
So Hagan, I have the opportunity, all the time that I'll go out to play golf, and fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and this young man, you will either see him one of two places, really three places. professionalism during the performance of his or her duties in the past year. You'll see him on the practice screen, you'll see him on the range, or more importantly, Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim April 10th through the 16th, 2022, to observe you'll see him playing with his dad. And so every time I see him, I'll ask him, "Is your dad beating you?" National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and ask all citizens to join me in expressing And he's like, "No, my dad doesn't beat me anymore."[937.26][937.26](LAUGHTER) And I think there's a lot of truth to that. our appreciation to the city of Murfreesboro's emergency communications personnel for their So Hagan, we want to let you know on behalf of the entire city council and the city of hard work and dedication. (APPLAUSE) Murfreesboro, we're proud of you, and we expect even bigger things next year when All right. you go back and win that thing. (APPLAUSE) All right. Kurt, thank you for getting that set up, we really appreciate it. I know a lot of us were watching him on Sunday morning on the Golf Channel, so we were pulling for you. And Hayden, unless you just want to stay here and watch probably the most boring thing that will happen to you all week long, y'all are welcome to go, and Chad, unless y'all just want to sit here. So thank y'all for coming. Thank y'all. I think it's probably safe to say after him being in Augusta all week long, that that was definitely the highlight, and attending the Murfreesboro City Council meeting would be definitely below that. So, all right, you have, I have one more recognition. We have Cameron, yeah, Cameron. Corey, would you like to recognize Cameron?
Is Angela here to do that?
Is Angela, or?
Rachel.
Rachel, okay. Thank you.
So we are honored for Cameron Mitchell to have his second year with us as the poet laureate, and he did a phenomenal job last year as the, you were the actor laureate last year, so this year he's the poet laureate. And he, he really brought a lot to the community last year, did a lot of events with us, opened his, opened his heart up to a lot of our community events, so we're really happy to have him back this year. And are you gonna do your, are you going to do what you did at Commission? Were you gonna do that tonight? I didn't know if that was the, that the plan. Sorry to put you on the spot if you weren't ready. Are you ready? Okay, well, we're really happy to have him for another year, and we know he's gonna continue to shine and be looking for him out in the community.
Thank you guys for acknowledging me this evening, and so, let's see, the poem I have for you is called "I Am." We all wish we had more than 24 hours in a day, but imagine a minute is measured in moments, a moment made for this, you were made for this, a life worth living, priceless endings that don't fade with the sun, they stay lit from darkness till dawn. Your dreams, when you reach for them, it won't be a mirage, it can be real if you're willing to reach for it. It's kinetic, connect the dots, fall in line, no matter how old you are, you're always in your prime because you are alive, still here, still breathing, still capable, still able. Before the award ceremony, you had already won. Before the graduation, you had already made it. Before the passive moments of seconds of realization, you were already noticed. Before an applause rises to greet you, a hand had already reached you in a pits of depression. Before that important person noticed you, you knew. Before those late nights of trying to be accepted, you were. Before that first sparrow tweeted peace at dawn, you rested in it. Before you tried to become, you already were. Before you tried to say, "I'm not," inside you is, "I am." Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Cameron, we appreciate you representing Murfreesboro. When we gave the proclamation earlier with Andrea and Jenny, they've worked so hard to be able to bring more awareness to the arts in Murfreesboro. We appreciate you helping further that, that mission, and more importantly, representing Murfreesboro. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
All right, you have the consent agenda in front of you, you have 13 different items on the consent agenda.
If there's no questions, I move for approval, the consent agenda.
Second.
Our motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have Resolution 22R09, this is fiscal year 22, Budget Amendment Number Six, and this is for schools.
Good evening, Mayor.
Director Duke, before you get started, would you like to update everyone about our 1:30 that we had today at Black Fox?
You know, I will, I will, I will update anyone that will listen, because we are so excited about what happened today. But we are privileged to say at 1:30 today, members of city council joined us with our school board, the governor of Tennessee, and the commissioner of education, and we are so proud to announce that one of our very own, Raven Brooks, second grade teacher at Black Fox Elementary, is the Tennessee recipient this year of the Milken National Educator Award. This is an award that's given out out of an organization, a philanthropic organization out of California, whose goal is to recognize the best of the best educators in the nation. So Raven is one of 60 educators who won this year across the nation, and today was her announcement ceremony. She was surprised, she was shocked, it's a, it's a pretty big deal. It is the largest national recognition teacher program in the country. And so for a Murfreesboro city teacher to get it just shows the caliber of teacher we have here. Her mom also works for Murfreesboro City Schools, so we're happy to bring her along for the surprise as well. But the best part is that it comes with $25,000 of unrestricted funds for Raven to use, and so we are super proud of her, and I want to thank all of you for coming and joining us today.
Director Duke, the two things that popped out to me today, not only for the governor and the commissioner of education, Schwinn, coming in to Murfreesboro, but we also have another winner, I think from 2014, that teaches at Segal.
We do.
And then we have a 2008, I think it's 2008, is that right?
2008, yes.
2008 winner, and do you know who that winner was?
Yeah, so that was me, so I did.[1366.12][1366.12](LAUGHTER) I was lucky, it was a long time ago, when I was much younger, in 2008, and so, you know, Rutherford County has a lot to be proud of, that, you know, three educators in our community have won this really prestigious honor, two of them working when I think is the greatest school system in the state of Tennessee, Murfreesboro City. So great things for sure going on in Murfreesboro City Schools.
Director Duke would never have told us that he won that award without us, without me pointing that out, because I think one of the most humble leaders I know, so thank you for what you're doing. Now I guess we get to talk about a budget amendment.
Now on to the budget amendment, the real fun stuff. So as the, we are all aware, we're facing some pretty high record inflation rates and cost of living rates right now, and so our board took action on the 22nd of March at our board meeting to pull some money out of our fund balance to help address this with our employees. So we made a budget amendment on that date in the amount of $863,138 for our general purpose funds, and then addressed also some money in our ESP budget to budget a one-time bonus from our fund balance to correct labor and benefit line items, to allow us to give all of our employees a one-time bonus of $500 for full-time employees and a $250 bonus for part-time employees as they go into summer to help address some of the rising cost of living rates. So our board approved that on the 22nd, we present that to you for your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director Duke?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland, I'd like to propose, you know, if anything, our last couple of years have taught us, the most valuable resource we have is our people. And given the economy and how things in the recognition that we've made for our city employees, I'd like us to match that fund balance figure that the school board did for that, so that we, we match that figure, making that $1,000 instead of $500. It expresses our appreciation for what the teachers have done during that time, and I'd like to make that motion. And the part, there's a part of that, it would be the figure that they're moving from fund balance, is what we were matching.
So matching exactly what they're doing.
What they're doing, exactly.
I'd love that to happen.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland, I'd like to propose, you know, if anything, our last couple of years have taught us, the most valuable resource we have is our people. And given the economy and how things in the recognition that we've made for our city employees, I'd like us to match that fund balance figure that the school board did for that, so that we, we match that figure, making that $1,000 instead of $500. It expresses our appreciation for what the teachers have done during that time, and I'd like to make that motion. And the part, there's a part of that, it would be the figure that they're moving from fund balance, is what we were matching.
So matching exactly what they're doing.
What they're doing, exactly.
I'd love that to happen.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Just to provide clarification for that, Director Duke, I'm sure knows, there'll be a process that we'll go through and run resolutions, and we'll need to do a budget amendment in two, two readings, so just to manage expectations a little bit, it'll probably be about, it'll be May sometime before we'll be able to get through all the process and match the funds. We want to make sure that it doesn't go against the maintenance of effort and it's a one-time, one-time contribution.
Yes, we're very thankful, thank you for that, Mr. Shacklet and council, and our teachers will be very thankful as well.
Thank you, Director Duke, appreciate what you do. Thank you, council. All right, we'll move into land use matters. You have a plan of services annexation and zoning for property along Northwest Broad Street. Marina.
Thank you, Mayor, council. So much to celebrate tonight, isn't that? I'm very proud of our community. Tonight, the city is, I just wanted to make a presentation that the city's received petitions to annex property located along the east side of Northwest Broad Street and southeast of Interstate 840 into the city of Murfreesboro. The property owners are MB Murphy IV as trustee of Elizabeth G. Hoard, 2013 Irrevocable Trust B., and as personal representative of the estate of Thomas Hoard III, and German Pittman Haymore III as general partner of the Mary Hoard Haymore Children LP, collectively the Hoard family. The subject property is 258 acres, as shown on the map. It is vacant agricultural land, no houses are located on the property, and it is located within the city's urban service, urban growth boundary area. Simultaneous with this application is a request to zone the property to CH, which is Commercial Highway, and GDO1 Gateway Design Overlay One District. Staff prepared a plan of services for the proposed annexation, and it concluded that city services can be provided to the property upon annexation. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on February 2nd, 2022, on this matter, and recommended approval of the proposed annexation. Staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing and approve the plan of services and requested annexation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant representatives are here tonight as well.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Rush? All right, we're gonna need to hold a public hearing for the plan of services and annexation, and then we'll move forward with our process. annexation, and then we'll move forward with our process. So if you want to speak at the upcoming, at the upcoming public hearings, you'll have three minutes as a, as an individual, five minutes as a, if you're representing a group. If you'll keep all of your questions directed towards the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing, and we'll get staff to help with that. So anyone wishing to speak for or against, please make sure that you, that you state your name and your address for the record. And so this is only for showing that we can provide services. So we're going to have one more public hearing that will be for, excuse me, this is for the plan of services and the annexation. So the next public hearing will be for the zoning request. So this is solely on whether we could, can annex it and whether we can provide services. So anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
I'll be the guinea pig. My name is Dave Nichols. I live at 2021 Riverbend Drive. I've been there 26 years. I opened a business here in 1983, ran fairly successful. I think you all probably read one of our publications, newspapers. I have a concern and a question. The location for what is to be Legacy Park on Broad Street, about a year ago, there was a meeting for O'Reilly Auto Parts, and the Highway Department, I am told, classified Broad Street and Thompson Lane as an F road. An F road means it's overburdened. Reading the publicity of Legacy Park and listening and looking at the traffic on Broad Street and on Thompson Lane, Legacy is talking about hiring 1,000 people. Well, 1,000 people, I mean, good luck if you can get them because nobody else can't. But that's 1,000 cars, and that is only employees. That's not all the customers that are going to be coming into these stadiums. So that is my number one concern, is the traffic in egress, coming right onto the off-ramp for 840. My second concern is the noise. We have a noise ordinance here. The noise ordinance specifically prohibits any person playing a radio, CD player, or cassette player on public or private property so that it can be heard beyond the property line of the person utilizing the equipment. You can't have a concert venue in somebody's backyard. It makes absolutely no sense. I don't know how to handle this. I got no problem at all with the stadiums and the things they're talking about doing for sports, but a concert venue in direct violation of our noise ordinance, and the problem with this, the noise ordinance, if you say, ah, well, kind of, you know, we'll go past this ordinance, we are nearly the fastest-growing city in the United States. Bypass one ordinance, you set a precedent, and the attorneys will tell you, you don't want to be setting those kind of precedents because it'll come back to bite you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Doug Hutchins. I live at 2220 London Dairy in Riverbend. My wife Brenda's with me tonight. We were at a previous meeting concerning the Legacy project, and we still have the same concerns. We have five of them. We expressed some concerns and asked some questions, and we still have not received answers to those questions, and they overlap somewhat with the previous gentleman. We're concerned about potential flooding of West Bank. We live right on a river, and we've seen that river flood several acres over behind our house onto the Ford property, and it's done that several times. Usually does that when it's at about 22 feet, and we've seen that river at 26 feet more than once or twice. So flooding on West Fork, we wonder if a study's been made and looked at to see what this potential project will do, reference flooding. Traffic issues, I won't restate all of those. That was stated previously, but they do not have access to 840, so it's going to have access to Northwest Broad, and so with the venues and the sports, there's obviously going to be a traffic issue during those times. We also have concern about sound and light. The river will not stop sound and light. That's going to come onto our properties each and every time they have venues, particularly if they fill the 5,000-seat outdoor seating capacity for concerts. And the last one we have, which is the fifth, is property values. Property values. We don't see how that's going to enhance but deteriorate our property values. So I guess the question is, have the studies been made, have the studies been reviewed concerning traffic issues and flooding issues, and how are we going to contain and manage sound and light issues? I don't really want to take too long because I need to call Hayden and see if he can help me with my golf game. So maybe I can catch him if he hadn't left. But we do consider these things serious. I do appreciate what the Planning Department's done. Sam and Marina has been out to our home, and we talked with them and showed them what the river does when it floods, and it floods very often in the spring, particularly in the fall. And so we really appreciate what they have done and trying to understand our concerns. So basically, again, potential flooding, traffic issues, sound, light abatement, and our property values. We would wish and hope that our Planning Department and our council would do the due diligence that they need to do before they approve this project, and we also hope that the Legacy people will do their due diligence. We understand they've started a recent one in Mesa, and they've had some issues out there. You can go online and reach some of those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Or, excuse me, Mr. Hutchins.
Good evening. Jeff Smith from Riverbend, 2308 London Dairy Drive. My wife and I had the opportunity for business to be out in Arizona last week. So we were in Tucson, but we swung through Mesa to see Legacy's first park, and we could see it about 10 miles away, coming through, it looked like a spaceship over there, but when we got, as we got closer, we became convinced that was it. It's very scary to imagine that same thing being replicated here in Murfreesboro. For one thing, that's out in the desert. Its only neighbor is the airport. We didn't see homes, we didn't see anything else around there, and yet, one of the things that prompted us to go was, were the complaints that we were seeing on the internet from people eight to 10 miles away about things that were happening there. Our home is probably within 400 to 500 yards of the tree line of this property, so there was nothing that we saw that close over there. So it doesn't really even compare, but my wife likened what we saw to Las Vegas. We went on Sunday night, it was probably about 8 o'clock at night, there were maybe, I don't know, 10 or so fields of this vast complex that were in use, but everything was lit up. Everything was on. Then there's the buildings in the middle, which I guess has housed some gyms and restaurants. They, all that's lit up. The sidewalk between the two is named, I think it's Miller Lite Way, and then there's bands of marquee lights going all the way around advertising plaintiff's attorneys, beer, all these things that we would love for our 10-year-old kids to see as they're playing innocent ball games. It was obvious to me that admission is not how Legacy is going to make its money off of this. It's all the advertising that's going, and there weren't even people, hardly anybody there. And these lights are visible from all around, so I think 840 and Broad Street, that's seen as a great advertising opportunity, and I'm telling you, when the leaves are off the trees from our house, that's going to be a clear shot, and that's if you're looking straight at the ground. If you're looking up in the air, we won't see stars anymore. There's just too much, too much electricity in use, too much concrete, that the parking lot could probably take care of a Titans game with the size. So the runoff from that is definitely a concern, the traffic onto Broad Street. There's just a lot of concerns. So if anybody wants to compare this to Mesa, I'm very concerned because the environment is not the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, anyone wishing to speak for or against? This is for the plan of services.
Hi, I'm Vicki Smith, and I am Jeff's wife, and we live at 2308 London Dairy. I was very insistent on us going to Mesa. It was not initially in our plans. I took photographs all the way as we were approaching in. I cannot begin to tell you the light pollution that that place puts off. Not only can I not imagine it from my home, but I can't imagine it from Broad Street. I know with all the technology that exists, there has to be lighting that focuses, focuses the light on the, you know, what is trying to be lit up. This place, however, did not appear to use that kind of lighting. Like I said, we could see it from miles, so the light pollution is a very big concern of mine. And also, as they have stated, traffic. If you've ever come home on a Friday, even a Thursday afternoon, 2:30, 3 o'clock along Broad Street, this place, it will be a nightmare. I cannot imagine what Broad Street would be like with this, because we were there on, as Jeff stated, at 8 o'clock on a Sunday evening when very few teams were playing, but yet the entire place was lit up. So traffic is a huge concern. So please take our concerns seriously. You know, it could be a good place. I was not impressed at all. It did not appear to be very, it looked like things were kind of done inexpensively to get it up, you know, to, I'm just very concerned about it. It's one thing to have a facility like this out in the middle of the desert or somewhere out, but to put it right smack in the middle of Murfreesboro, guys, I don't think this is what's for Murfreesboro. And if somehow this gets through, I can only beg you guys to make some major restrictions on light pollution, sound pollution, and we need to expand Broad Street. Something needs to be done because I just cannot imagine this place. I have photographs, I have pictures of how big this place is, how the parking lot, you know, you fill those places up, and it's going to be a mess in town. So please consider all this before doing this. They are approving it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll, a lot of the questions that were asked, we're going to get you answers from staff and then also the developer, the applicant, but those are not necessarily directed towards the plan of services. Right now, the plan of services is really just regarding to whether we can provide fire, protection, sewer, water, and those type of things. So what I'm going to do, we're going to go through the plan of services and the annexation, even though if we pass those, if the zoning does not pass, those are invalid. So we'll get your questions answered, which are more directed in the zoning portion of what we're going to talk about. So you have the plan of services, Resolution 22RPS02. Is there any question on the plan of services?
Can we hold off on everything until we have the whole package?
Well, we have to go through plan of services first, then we have to go through annexation, and then we can discuss the zoning, which entails traffic. The issues I had, noise, sound, light, property values, river flooding, traffic, size and scope, runoff, light pollution and traffic, so we'll get those answered in the zoning phase. I mean, we can get those answered in the plan of services, but we still have to have a public hearing on the zoning phase as well.
So what we're saying is the plan of services, it's just our plans to do this. It's not like we're going to do it.
Now, the plan of services is just if we can provide services to the area. So if sewer is available, if water's available, if we can provide fire protection, if we can provide police protection, if we can provide electric, so none of that really matters if the zoning doesn't pass. Adam, am I?
You've correctly summarized it, yes.
Okay.
Same thing we do for every annexation.
Yeah, so the zone is going to be yes or no, whether we're going to do it. This is kind of obsolete really to vote on, but...
Yes, in 2010, the annexation laws changed where we have to do a plan of services, and then we also have to do an annexation, and then the zoning.
Right.
So it's, it's just the, it's almost like the, I don't want to use the term the Holy Trinity, but all three have to pass for any of them to be valid, so.
So when we're looking at, yeah, I see it's not whether, for the thing, it's just can we provide for it, whether it's going to be here or 10 miles away.
Yeah, we have to go through all three steps, and if any one of the steps fails, then it doesn't happen.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Yes.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to the annexation, Resolution 22RA02, which basically says that we can annex the property.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Yes.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, now we're going to move into the zoning phase, which is really the questions that you guys were answering or asking. So we have a public hearing now to zone 258.8 acres. Ms. Rush.
I pretty much could leave this map up. But... The applicant, Legacy Sports Tennessee, is requesting to zone the property to Commercial Highway and GDO 1 simultaneous with the annexation. This is the companion zoning to the annexation of the previous agenda item. As noted, the property is located along the east side of Northwest Broad Street and southeast of Interstate 840, and is approximately 259 acres in area, and was agricultural land. Staff had considered the zoning that was requested, and after further analysis, it was evident that the GDO 1 overlay district is pretty much earmarked or focused on commercial retail, hotels, office, and even attached residential buildings, and that athletic fields and athletic sporting event buildings are really not appropriate within the zoning district due to its emphasis on design, design things that you've seen many times, such as all-masonry building, increased building articulation, base metal tops of buildings. So staff is asking the council to consider modification to the requested zoning overlay to exclude the portions of the property for the playfields and athletic buildings from that GDO 1 overlay. And in this particular case, this information as to where that line would be will be presented at a second, at the second reading. In this, allowed uses in the Urban Commercial Mixed Use Future Land Use Map indicates that this is the most appropriate character for the subject property. Allowed uses within this character include intensive urban character with multiplicity of uses, including multifamily residential, entertainment, restaurants, retail, and other offices and hotels. Staff believes that the proposed zoning is consistent with the future land use map in this category. As noted on the previous agenda item, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on February 2nd and recommended approval of the proposed zoning for the property. Staff recommends that the council conduct a public hearing on the zoning for the subject property. I'm happy to answer any questions, in addition to any of the questions that were asked previously as well as the applicants are here tonight that can respond. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Rush?
What type of issues came up in the Planning Commission on this project?
During the public hearing, the comments...
Well, the planning, when it was brought to the Planning Commission, what kind of comments, were there any concerns from the Planning Commission specifically on any theme? I guess maybe...
I can answer a couple of them, I guess. You know, a couple of things that I remember, there wasn't a whole lot of, a whole lot of people that came and spoke necessarily. We did talk about the light stuff, and of course, as you know, the floodwater stuff is kind of handled by TDEC and by the state and by our engineers, but we talked a lot I can't remember. Oh, Lord. Yeah, that the height of the light poles, that was sort of just a change to our total ordinance that is going to apply to this property. And we did make some real specific changes to that, that require focused lighting, you know, and that, you know, it has to be a certain distance away from houses and they can't shine out at a certain angle. But the bottom line was, we changed it to make sure that there was going to be focused lighting, and that doesn't just go for this. That was the total ordinance, as I remember, you know, for all of Murfreesboro. If you want a good example, one of the things that we talked about out there at Segal Park, the soccer park, so if you go kind of to the, what I call the older side, you know, which has been there for a while versus the Jordan Farm, which is over to the west, the six fields that we built most recently and lighted, those, you need to go by there at night, you know, to kind of look across there. I think you would find that it is substantially different than what you might expect in terms of light pollution. I mean, you know, it's like dark until all of a sudden you just see this something lit up over there, but it... There's no light coming off of it. But it is just good... That was one of the examples I know we use at Planning Commission, but I know that we addressed it in the Planning Commission public hearing, but then we also addressed it in the ordinance that covers everywhere in Murfreesboro, as I recollect it. Greg's nodding. So, the sound, I believe we talked about, and I think that maybe the applicant will talk about it, yeah, that we asked that everything be pointed outward towards the, you know, not towards the houses, but it would be pointed out towards the interstate and, you know, do things like that to avoid having the sounds be coming back that direction, because it is obviously a big difference whether or not the speakers are pointed that way versus that way and what's behind it and what's not, and, you know, where it's hamed and what's between the houses. So, those are the things I think, you know, we tried to at least... I think we tried to at least bring those things up as being important points. We agree and want to make sure that things are done to minimize those things. And I think you guys may want to talk about what impact and sound, the noise ordinance has, if it applies here, if it doesn't apply here, but those kinds of things, but...
Does this... Let me ask a broader question. Does this zoning exclude the property owner from any ordinance, sound, light, anything that's in the... That's presently applied?
No, there... This is bulk zoning, and the development, just like any other development, is still subject to all city ordinances. They would need to comply. The applicants are in the midst of developing their plans, so a lot of the details is they will evolve throughout that development of the plan will come later, because there'll be a traffic study and lighting studies and parking studies that will be included. But for the purposes of tonight, it is just the bulk zoning.
So, to still go through what steps exactly, you know, site plan review and all that kind of stuff, but what steps come after this, just for the council and for the public?
Well, anything that they will do on the property will be subject to a site plan application and review process. Staff goes through that analysis thoroughly to ensure that it is what they're proposing or what anyone is proposing through that process is consistent with city codes.
Is there another review from the Planning Commission or from us?
For the portion that would be under Gateway Design Overlay, there is additional reviews through the Planning Commission. There would not be any additional information that would need to come to the City Council.
I've got a question. Marina, have you been to the Mesa site?
Yes, sir.
What comments would you make related to the other comments about the light pollution, noise pollution? Did you see that firsthand?
The lights were primarily directed onsite. There is, you know, light, very lighted up fields. It's going to be not an apples-to-apples comparison. Our facility, the light standards are different. They had to comply with height issues due to the airport proximity, and the lower the standards go to the ground, the more bright in a halo you get, halo effect. So, as a result of the ordinance amendment to allow a taller light fixture, will help focus and direct that lighting onto the fields and not have that spill or halo effect.
So, all lighting is going to be more like an umbrella effect, where it's going to just cover this area, just going to zoom on this area, and the out of bounds will not be lit up, is what we're seeing.
I'd like to actually have the applicant's architect explain that more. He's much more familiar with that.
Thank you.
If there's any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer. Okay.
I had one more. She mentioned build quality, the way it looked, looked like it was kind of thrown together. Can you explain how the GDO overlay will kind of, the building standards that are going to be involved with the GDO?
Well, with the Gateway Design Overlay, that is kind of our highest standard, and that overlay will still be in place for all the buildings that would be along Broad Street. So, those buildings will be the most visible, they will be the closest to the streets. The GDO overlay, you can't imagine having a building that's, you know, four, 500,000 square feet in size or larger, all in clad in brick. It would not be a very attractive building. I can liken it similar to what the Costco building and how that turned out by using variations of materials and design and plane and roof, you know, roof heights. You can get an attractive building that's a large, you know, box, so to speak, without having all the glazing, the window, the brick requirements.
I'll add to that. Haven't had some personal experience in sports complexes and of size similar to this and stuff. The standards were not inexpensive at all. They were very, very much appropriate, not only for this, but for any type of top-quality athletic facility that you would see, as was the advertising that you would see. It's similar to if you go to Bridgestone or, you know, Ballpark or... I haven't been to the Titans, but, you know, you're going to see the type of advertising you'd see. It's sports-related advertising, so... But the build quality, I will tell you, is very, very high.
And Craig, can you address traffic relating to the meeting that you guys had with the governor? Or just let people know that we are working on traffic?
Yeah, we met Tuesday with representatives of the governor's office, the commissioner... There were a bunch of commissioners there. There's a bunch of commissioners with the state. Tourism, economic development, TDOT Commissioner, but ultimately, I'm not going to say that they were concerned with the overall project, but they were definitely concerned with Broad Street and the 840 interchange. And there were significant road improvements that were talked about to be able to be completed with that project. Sam Huddleston was there as well, and Sam can get more... I think what may would be good is let's, before we get really diving into a lot of the questions, I think it'd be good to have the public hearing and see if there's any more comments, and then go through if everyone's okay having staff come up to address those. It would be good before the public hearing if... Matt, do you have a presentation, Mr. Taylor, that you would like to give?
I don't have anything formal. I was going to address the lighting question that Marina had, but I can wait till after or whichever you prefer.
Let's have the public hearing first, and then we can really get into the weeds on all the questions that were asked.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we need to hold a public hearing for the zoning of this 258.8 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? And those who've already spoke in the Plan of Services, I've got all your comments and addresses, so I promise you, we'll get those answered. Unless you would like to come up, you're more than welcome to come up and speak again. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Yes, sir.
I guess I would just like to emphasize what I said before. They plan on having concerts there. We can hear the traffic at the intersection of 840 and Northwest Broad now, trucks and motorcycles thing. We can hear that now. Can you imagine what a concert with 5,000-plus people is going to sound like? And I guess I'd ask the question, if they were building that close to your home, one of the city council members, would you be happy with that and would you approve it? Think about that. Thank you.
Mr. Hutchins, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Nichols?
I, again, would like to just repeat, we have an ordinance on the books. If we start bypassing ordinances as fast as this city is growing, it's going to haunt all of you folks. That's just the way it is. You set a precedent, you bypass it, it doesn't work. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the city council and staff. I'm Brick Murfree. I'm extremely excited about this project. I'm speaking as a future neighbor.
Can we get your address, Mr. Murfree?
My address now is 1011 Glasgow Drive.
Okay.
And my future address is 2227 Shannon Drive, 2227 Shannon Drive. And I'm extremely excited about the project. I've kind of known about this way before. Most folks did and just had the opportunity to be involved from the beginning and bought, you know, a house right near this project. I'll be a neighbor. I've tore the house down, I'm building a new house there. I'm extremely excited about it, and I bought that lot knowing that this was coming. And my family's excited about it, and I'm putting my money where my mouth is. I mean, I'm excited about this, I really am. And so, I'm excited to be a neighbor. I think it's going to be a great thing for the community. I know the city will do a great job in managing it and making sure that it doesn't impact the neighbors. You guys always do. I've got the utmost faith in the city and in Matt Taylor and his team to make sure this is done right, and it will be done. So, I'm excited about it, and I hope you guys vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murfree. All right, anyone else? Mr. Smith?
I just want to ask a question about, like, with the lighting, I don't know if there's a billboard ordinance or something that would kind of keep those in check. Because I know it's easy to maybe liken this to Segal Park or Sportscom or something like that. This isn't like that. This is going to be more, much more on a professional type of level. So, like, when I was in the parking lot and the, you know, the advertising is going this way, it's going this way, it was like being in a Best Buy when they turn all the TVs on at the same time and they're all... That's what it's kind of like. So, I'm hoping, because I can kind of sense where it's going, I'm hoping that there's some kind of an ordinance or some, something that would control the advertising, whether it's audio or visual. And I don't, I'm not familiar with all the zoning things, so I'd like, just like to make sure there's something to control that.
Yes, sir. We'll get that answered.
Good evening, my name is Chad Miller. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Legacy Sports Tennessee, and I just want to thank you guys for allowing us to be here this evening. And I just want to say how excited we are to be a part of this community and bring this type of project to the city of Murfreesboro. And it's important for us to understand with all the residences and neighbors as well, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to be a good partner to the community. So, we take these concerns very seriously. We'll work with you guys in addressing these concerns to make sure that we're a good neighbor and a good partner to the city of Murfreesboro. So, as we continue to work through this process, I look forward to working with city staff and making sure that we're building a top-notch facility that everybody in this community can be proud of. But it's important for us, for the fabric of the community, to understand that this is theirs as well. This is not just something that we're bringing in for people to come and enjoy outside the community. We want you guys to be able to embrace this and really enjoy this and call it your own. So, when you guys talk about the concerns of lighting and sound and things like that, it's the reason why we have the best engineers and the best people working on the traffic studies and the analysis and the architects, because it's very important for us to build a top-notch quality facility that everybody can be proud of and can come out and enjoy and really just embrace what we're bringing to Middle Tennessee. So, on behalf of Legacy and our team, and we're excited to work with city staff and work with the neighboring community in making sure that everybody is happy and really proud of what we build here. So, just wanted to thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider on first reading ordinance 22OZ02. I want to go through the list of questions we have. Mr. Huddleston, can you please update everyone on... There was a question about the O'Reilly's that was on the corner, and then if you don't mind sort of dovetailing that into traffic, and then we'll get into some of the other items.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There was a question about the rating of the intersection and the statements that were made around the O'Reilly's proposal at Thompson and Broad, and that traffic study did rate that intersection as an F-rated intersection. The challenge we had on O'Reilly's was their impact right at the intersection and really no plan or no way to mitigate those impacts because of the closeness and the ingress and egress points. And so, we knew we already had a troubled intersection there, and then adding their proposed traffic demands to that without a plan to mitigate it seemed very inappropriate for us to approve that plan. So, while they did not formally fall, come into the process and ask for approval based on the concerns we had with traffic, they did withdraw their plan. They... Wouldn't surprise us to conclude today that the intersection of Thompson and Broad continues to be an F-rated intersection. We do have traffic or project improvements proposed with the Department of Transportation. Some of us have been following that for quite some time, making sure that TDOT's staying on track with that, and we understand that they are actively acquiring right-of-way and following that process, they'll be ready to advertise that project for bid. I think one of our asks of TDOT on this project will be to accelerate that to the extent that their process will allow it. There are some federal funds involved in TDOT's project, and so, we do have federal right-of-way acquisition and bidding to follow there, but to the extent that TDOT can advance that project and make sure it's funded and budgeted and scheduled at the earliest extent possible, that would be one of our asks of TDOT. Our group, city staff, TDOT staff, the design staff, we started discussing these issues on traffic probably about four months ago when the proposals first started coming in. Most recently, we met specifically and discussed the scope of the traffic study. We've identified the intersections that we propose to study. We're starting, for example, on Broad Street at Florence Road or Broad and 840, moving on down, we will study the intersection of Broad and Thompson, and then also looking at Blanton Drive and Thompson Lane, just understanding how those intersections function today. We will, the traffic consultant will then superimpose, if I could say it that way, the traffic demands that they will take from the traffic generated for this site and overlay those on the already existing traffic demands. We'll accelerate those in time because we know that the Broad Street traffic will continue to grow at 1% or 2% per year typically, and so, we'll look at that as an existing condition and future conditions. And part of the traffic study will be recommendations on how to mitigate and manage those demands. We've talked very specifically about the peak hours and what are of concern to us and how that matches up with the peak hour demands of the facility. We do have a good case study with Mesa being a very similar operation as to what they proposed to here, and so, we can see when those traffic demands occur and then superimpose those traffic demands and peak hour demands with that same timeframe with our study. The technology and traffic analysis, especially the existing traffic counts, is so good now. We're getting traffic demand in 15-minute intervals over a 24-hour basis. If we need to study a whole week, we can get a combined idea of what that traffic demand looks like through the week, during the morning and afternoon peaks, and also on the weekend, because we think this facility will have a significant Friday, Saturday, Sunday impact as well as a pretty standard Monday-through-Thursday impact. So, Mayor, we're looking to really drill in on this. We don't have any, the results of that for this rezoning tonight, but certainly before this project comes through for a site plan, we will have analyzed the traffic and have recommendations from the consultant, which we will also clear through T... recommendations from the consultant, which we will also clear through TDOT to get their input and buy-in before that's presented to the planning commission. I'd be glad answering more questions on that. I'd be glad to offer up Matt Taylor to provide some additional comments on traffic, and we'll try to answer any questions you might have on that.
Any questions on traffic for Mr. Huddleston?
How do we pay for road improvements?
How do we pay for road improvements? Yeah, so this one will likely involve a very significant amount of road improvements, including possibly to the 840 interchange, understanding that the significant amount, especially of the weekend traffic, we anticipate to come from 840. And so what we envision here is a public-private partnership between the Department of Transportation, the city of Murfreesboro, and the developer to identify those needed improvements, and those will be part of likely a local participation, possibly through a TIF. And I'm gonna let Mr. Tyndall jump in if he wants to and help with any of this. But we would look to fund those off-site road improvements between TDOT and the city and the, a TIF for the project. Very specifically, our concerns for this facility on traffic operations are really what the ins and outs do on Broad Street. And our biggest exposure is the impact that happens to us on that, on that 840 to Thompson, and the Thompson to 840 flows in the mornings and afternoons. And so one of the things that we've asked the traffic consultant to really understand is how those traffic operations, right at the intersections, how those will function. And so that's going to be a very significant focus. And then a more community-wide focus would be short-term and long-term improvements on Broad Street, perhaps starting even as inbound as Northfield Boulevard and extending to the Florence Road. You may recall, Mr. Shacklet, that in our city's 2040 major transportation plan, we have Broad Street projected as a six-lane roadway from its current four-lane configuration at Medical Center Parkway, extending all the way through State Route or Interstate 840. I think I answered your question on the prospective funding. And maybe a follow-up on a statement that was made a little bit earlier with our meeting. Part of our purpose for meeting with TDOT was to talk about that participation and how that might, how that might be formulated. We don't have a specific answer to that, but we'll continue to pursue that.
Senator Reeves also was the one who set the meeting to talk about not only Broad Street and 840, but the one thing that impressed coming away from that was the commitment that TDOT, and that we shared with TDOT, that we feel like that the Cherry Lane interchange was beneficial into the intersection on Broad Street, where Cherry Lane would cross Stones River to get people from Broad Street to Cherry Lane and bypass all the traffic of the people who are coming to Thompson Lane, to not have to drive to Thompson Lane anymore, that they could go to Cherry Lane. So my impression was that they were committed to helping speed along that interchange.
Yes. Yes, very helpful conversation with our TDOT Commissioner and Steve Allen with their Special Projects Division.
Mr. Huddleston, will you also address runoff and flooding? I think Mr. Hutchins had that question.
Sure, sure. So while this is a request for zoning, we do understand that this will be followed up with a site plan submittal that would come before the planning commission. And as with all of our site plans, we're going to apply the city standards to those, including our floodplain management ordinance, as well as our stormwater ordinance. And both of those have a, would require that they provide for protection of the floodplain and floodway, and then also management of their site-generated stormwater. This is a very large development, and so managing stormwater off of this project would be a very significant effort. We do have a good amount of athletic fields, and that runoff characteristic, you know, really balances out differently than perhaps all of the parking and paving that could possibly be there on a fully-developed commercial site of that size. So, Mayor, we would expect that they would meet the standards of our ordinance, and if they're not able to do that, we would not gain approval of their site plan.
So I had a question related to, you talked about the roadway improvements and public-private partnership, and potentially a TIF there. Has there been any discussion, any other discussion about those types of partnerships related to the infrastructure of the Legacy Sports development overall, or has it just been limited to the roadway improvements?
The TIF district, or the TIF financing, has a variety of elements that can be used, can be funded from a TIF approach, including onsite public infrastructure, offsite public infrastructure, including roadways, public parking structures. And Mr. Tyndall, if you want to jump in and supplement any of that.
Yeah, what I was gonna say, at this point in time, we're really exchanging information. We have their economic impact and some more information that we've requested, and so we're continuing to work on that at this point.
So will infrastructure, an agreement, or will that clearly, before we get to a site plan approval at the planning commission, will there be this infrastructure agreement with the state and all the things that we're talking about for the improvements? Those, will they be firmed up by the time we do a site approval?
Yeah, I think, I think for the benefit of all the parties involved, we have to, we have to have that very well defined. And what I would typically tell you, will bring you, would be a project development agreement, which would help, would define the terms of our relationship with Legacy Sports, who's doing what and when. And then with that, there's a significant approval process required for the TIF as well, including the Industrial Development Board, the mayor and council here, and then the county commission to reflect the wishes of the Rutherford County delegations in regard to that. And so, yes, the devil, as they say, is in the details, but we've got to bring all of those documents and all of those approvals back to you, and have a chance to look at those as we continue to advance this project. I think it was significant to note, Mayor, in their economic analysis plan, and this was made, and our statement was made in our meeting with the state delegation, and that is that this is, this is about 150% of the annual visitors that currently go through the gates at Dollywood. And so it's, the state recognizes that this facility is a high-volume visitor destination that would rival many of the very popular destinations that all of us are familiar with across our state, and Dollywood being one of those that most of us would be familiar with.
Adam, do you mind talking about bypassing of any ordinances, including our noise ordinance and our lighting ordinance?
Sure. With respect to the noise ordinance, it does establish maximum permissible sound levels based on land use, both the land, the use where the sound is generated and the receiving land use. Built into the ordinance, however, there is provision that allows the Board of Zoning Appeal to grant variances, and in fact, that is something that is, that ability to have an entity that provides variances under given circumstances is something that's been recognized by courts as reasonable and prudent and legally appropriate. Variances can only be granted, however, from the permissible sound levels if the board finds that the relief is in the public interest, or if the strict application of such sound levels would create an undue hardship on the person seeking relief, and there is no reasonable and prudent alternative method for engaging the activity for which the variance is sought. In granting a variance, in considering a variance request, there are specific provisions that the board has to consider. The ordinance says the board shall consider the following factors. And it, and the, in granting a variance, the board can, may prescribe reasonable conditions or requirements on the noise generating activity. So for example, if the, if the maximum permissible sound level was X, and they wanted to go to X plus five, you could say, okay, well, the board could say, we'll allow you X plus five decibels, but it can only be on these nights, within these hours, or these days, within these hours, and put time limitations on it. But it is...
Or is the applicant asking for any variances on noise? I don't remember us ever having an applicant ever come to us and ask a variance on our noise ordinance, Mr. Murfree.
And my, I mean, this provision has been in place for eight years, and I'm not aware of any variance provision coming before the board.
Mr. Nichols, you had asked a question on bypassing ordinance. I can't ever remember that we've ever had an applicant who's asked for us to lessen our ordinances, or our approved ordinances. Have y'all seen that on the planning commission?
No.
Size and scope, I think Ms. Rush talked about that. The only other...
I think, Mayor, there was maybe a question about how we would deal with the advertising and the displays there, and while we don't have a specific plan in front of us, certainly anything that would meet the definition of a sign would need to meet our sign ordinance. And we've engaged our sign, our building codes department in helping to start analyze that, and we've shared information with the applicant on that. And so we'll look for a full sign package that would be required to make sure that any signage that they would have would meet the city requirements there. This property is eligible for a planned sign overlay, and so to give you some background information on that, St. Thomas, Rutherford, Costco, the Fountains, all have planned, the avenues all have planned sign overlays, because the nature of their property and the nature of their use of that property, some of the provisions of our sign ordinance don't adequately cover perhaps the need of that. Amazon has a planned sign overlay, and it was interesting, Amazon constructed a million-square-foot building, that's about 23 acres under roof. Our signage provision for a building of that size, without the planned sign overlay, you could not read the sign from Joby Jackson Parkway. So in that, they requested some relief of the size of the sign that was commensurate with the size of the building. And I suspect that this would be appropriate for a planned sign overlay as well, in which the applicant worked with city staff, and then through the planning commission, public hearing process, and the mayor and council to establish the conditions of signage for the property. I think maybe there was also a question on lighting, and Ms. Rush, I'm stealing her thunder, but she would explain to you that as a part of the site plan, we'll require a lighting plan that demonstrates compliance with the city's site plan regulations, including lighting. We ask that the lighting not have spillover onto adjacent properties, that's at the .5-foot candle level. We also ask that they use certain light fixtures and light management approaches that direct the lighting downward, trying to avoid glare and spillover onto adjacent properties. And so those will be all things that we can look at as a part of the site plan. We don't have enough information to analyze their plan at this point, but I would say to help you with that, that we'll apply the light standards that are in our zoning ordinance as we would with any property.
I think the only other question that someone had was on property values, and I know that's a subjective question for us to be able to answer on property values. Someone with staff want to answer that? That's a really tough question to be able to answer on property value. I don't think we ever try to do anything to hurt people's property value. I've sat up here with Mayor Bragg when he was mayor before me, and he would talk about, he lived in Riverbend, and there was a sewer processing plant that's behind the neighborhood there, and how hard the city worked on making sure that we were good neighbors. So, and initially, when that went in. So we do, as a council, and really the planning commission does the heavy lifting before it ever gets to us, with the restrictions we put in place to do everything we can to protect property value. Okay. Any other questions?
I got one more question, just to, I think we talked about this to the planning commission, but I just want to clarify, and I apologize, I stepped out for a minute if somebody else asked it, but as far as the border of the river and the trees that are along the river right now, there was some kind of a, is that all gonna get, you know, are those all going away? Is there a plan for there to be some of a buffer there, where some of those trees, or most of those trees will stay, or how's that look?
Matt Taylor from SEC. You're right, we did talk about that. The city's stream buffer protection, or water quality protection area, will require us to keep at least 50 feet permanently there. TDEC also has a minimum 60-feet buffer through there, so we want to leave as many of those as we can, even beyond that. So those will absolutely stay along the riverbank there.
Mr. Taylor, I have a quick question. I thought that, on our information we have, but the property that backs up to Riverview specifically, I didn't think that was part of the...
Riverbend.
Riverbend, I'm sorry, not Riverview. But I didn't think that was part of the development.
It's not. There's, I don't remember the size of the property, but this property right here is outside of the package, and so there is a significant separation between our property and the Riverbend neighborhood.
Okay. I want to make sure I...
Yes, sir. And I will say on the flooding, Riverbend is upstream of our property, so all of our water will be running into the river downstream. So actually, it'd be Riverbend's water running onto our property, for lack of a better term.
All right. Any questions on this zoning request?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Yes.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Abstain.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item 17. This is amending ordinance 19OZ33 to correct the zoning boundary for the Oakland Court PRD, and this is first reading ordinance 22OZ05.
Good morning, good evening. Mayor and council, standing before you, asking approval to correct the zoning boundary for Oakland Court PRD located along North Academy Street. The Murfreesboro Housing Authority presented a zoning application in 2019 to rezon approximately 20 acres along North Academy Street, several other adjacent streets to PRD. Council approved the zoning request on second and final reading on October 3, 2019. Staff has determined that there was an error on the map prepared for the rezoning, including the map attached to the effective ordinance approved by council. The map followed the zoning boundary that was in effect at the time instead of the partial boundary, and inadvertently showed part of the Oakland's mansion, partial as being included in MHA's zoning change request. After consultation with legal, it was determined that the best course of action was to bring this item back to council for a vote to correct this clerical error. If approved by council, the zoning shown on the city's zoning map for the portion of the Oakland's mansion, partial, in question, will revert back to RD, residential duplex district consent, consistent with how it was depicted on the zoning map in 2019 before Oakland's court rezoning. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. McKnight?
If there are none, I move for approval.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Now consider planning commission recommendations for public hearings. Mr. McKnight?
Mayor, council, standing before you tonight to schedule a public hearing and for a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to the following. And this is actually the ordinance that Commissioner, Planning Commission, LaLance was speaking of before on the ordinance amendments. It's for public hearings for Section 2, Interpretation... It's for public hearings for Section 2 Interpretation and Definitions, Section 18 Regulations and General Applicability, Section 25 of the ordinance Temporary and Accessory Structures and Uses, Section 34 of the ordinance Flood Plane Zoning, and Chart 2 Minimum Lot Requirements, Minimum Yard Requirements, Land Use Intensity Ratios, including Chart 2 End Notes. We recommend scheduling the public hearings for May 5. I'll stand before you answer any questions.
Move to set the public hearing for May 5?
Second. First is your second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, item 19, Overall Creek, this is a FEMA LOMER supplemental services.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We have a proposal from Neil Schaefer for supplemental services to complete a FEMA letter map revision for Overall Creek at Manson Pike. 2020, the city contracted with Neil Schaefer to study and update the maps of, of Overall Creek at Manson Pike, and during that process, we found some, several deficiencies in the data and models that had been previously used for floodplain mapping. And then during our FEMA review, FEMA asked for some additional data and analysis and mitigation efforts. Neil Schaefer has provided a supplemental budget request to help answer those questions, address the deficiencies, and then analyze the potential for mitigation. The fiscal impact on this is an increase of $51,500 for a total budget of $93,000, $93,045, with that to be paid from a stormwater utility fee, which we used to reimburse the general fund for processing those invoices. Recommend approval of the request, which has been approved by the city attorney, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Holson?
There are none, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Brown.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to Siegel Indoor Training Facility netting and padding. Thomas?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you for having me. If you've been by Siegel Park lately, then you, you had to notice the new indoor training facility. The core or the, the structure itself is nearing completion, and this is the shell. Warner Athletics will come in, hopefully within the next month, and start installing the synthetic turf, which will service the flooring for the 97,000 square foot facility. In working with this project, we were well aware that there would be additional amenities that would need to be put in place. Protected padding and netting throughout the perimeter of the facility is going to be essential to protecting not only the players and guests, but also protecting the city's investment. Typically, we would bid a project like this, but with the current supply chain issues, also the complexity of the, the structure, the Clearspan themselves recommended a vendor. After vetting that vendor through their organization that the city has worked with, Clearspan has worked with, and so they also work with the Purchasing Alliance, the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance is a member, and I believe council resolution 15R22 approved that organization. But we worked with Kathy Smith and the purchasing department to ensure that we were being physically responsible, and that this method not only would help us in our tight time restraint, getting the supplies and things needed for the installation, but also that we were being physically responsible and actually getting a discount by utilizing them. So the, the project came in with Grand Slam safety under, significantly under the MSRP pricing, so we are confident that we were getting a good deal. They've worked with Clearspan before, so, and I want to give accolades to Megan Strobe and the legal department for getting that paperwork and, and all the documents necessary. But before you, is a contract that is for Grand Slam safety to provide protected padding and netting. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? No questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Thomas. All right, we'll move to item 21, Temporary Flow Monitoring Study Basin MF08 Water Resources. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Do you have a PowerPoint presentation?
You know Darren's not going to let me up here without one.
Okay.
And if it's up on, how do I get it on the screen? Okay. If it's up there, then my face is not up there. Okay. The department has a, in the city, has a master services agreement with ADS for permanent flow monitoring. We have 19 flow monitors in our system, but yearly, we pick a basin that we go into and install temporary flow monitors, and this year, we have chosen basin 8, which is comprised of, all of the different colors up there are the number of monitors that we will put in basin 8. It is quite large. We also have a few going in basin 12, which we didn't put a slide up, just because it was very small. Our budget for temporary flow monitoring each year is $300,000, and this year, we do have money in that $300,000 for temporary monitoring, but this year, with this basin being so large, our temporary monitors were so great that it was going to go over budget. It exceeds the budget by $71,250. But this, monitoring this basin will help us decide where the best location for our northeast regional pump station, that I know that you've heard Darren speak of numerous times. It'll help us find the best location to serve this area as it grows in the future. So staff would recommend approval of the additional money of $71,250.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Resident project representative for Overall Creek Pump Station.
Okay, this pump station is located along Northwest Broad Street, just north of where the Cherry Lane and Broad Street intersection will be. We have bid out a project to double the capacity of that station. SSR designed that station for us. The bids came in and was awarded to Blakely Construction Services in the amount of 4.96 million, almost five. This station will include heavy mechanical and structural and electrical construction, and it requires outside expertise over what, and outside the expertise of our in-house engineering inspectors. So we would like to request SSR provide resident project and representative in the amount of $186,500. The project is expected to last a little over a year for approximately 68 weeks.
Any questions?
I'll move for approval. Second.
Ms. Brown?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we now have item 23, the Water, Wastewater Mechanical Electrical Services Contract Task Order Number 22 dash 02.
Okay. The department recently had bid out our new mechanical electrical services contract this year. It was awarded to John Bouchard, and through that contract, we are able to create task orders that are for replacement projects such as these, that are outside of the scope of work that our in-house maintenance technicians are able to do. We have asked John Bouchard to prepare and, and give us this task order to replace 10 actuators at the water treatment plant, and the actuators, I've been told, are about 13 years old. There's a couple of them right now that they're having to get on a ladder and operate manually. So we would request to replace all 10. Five of those were in this year's budget, but this will extend into next year's budget, so we felt like it was best to just go ahead and group them all together, and are requesting. The project cost is $103,965. And we would recommend approval of the task order.
I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
Mr. Gore is at the Central Tennessee Solid Waste, the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Board tonight. They're meeting at the airport, so that's why he couldn't, couldn't be here tonight. So Valerie filled in honestly better than Darren. So we'll move to, item 24 has been removed from the list, and now I think we have an additional item from Nate, that's sitting in front of you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm sorry I'm bringing this to you on short notice, but this is a change order, it's kind of time sensitive, it's with Voice Ballard Construction totaling $16,023 to repair spalled concrete on the foundation of the indoor practice facility that's currently under construction. So right now, we've got about 99% of the facility enclosed, and due to the spalled concrete, we can't move on to the next phase of work in closing the facility. So funding for this is allocated in the CIP. I gave you a packet earlier this evening, and there's more information about exactly what's happening and the correction efforts that need to be made, specified by the engineer, and I would be glad to answer any questions that you have.
There are none, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. I don't see any beer or any other permits.
We have several beer permits tonight.
Okay.
We have five regular permits. There's two new locations, one's a restaurant at 2108 Medical Center Parkway, Suite A. There's a convenience store with a gas station at 3595 Shelbyville Pike. There's three ownership and name changes for restaurants at 740 Northwest Broad Street, 2808 Old Fort Parkway, Suite O, and 2069 Las Casas Pike. All applicants have met requirements for a beer permit, and staff recommends approval pending final building and codes inspections. And then there's three special events permits, two dates for Main Street Murfreesboro, and an event for Nourish Food Bank.
Any questions for Ms. Brown?
There are none, I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any other business from staff? Or any state, I'm sorry, any statements?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other business from staff?
Workshop next Wednesday, 11:30 at the airport.
Workshop next Wednesday? If I remember, I emailed, Mr. Martin, you won't be here next Wednesday, okay?
Hey, but while we're looking at our calendars, what did we, what did we decide? Was it Tuesday and Wednesday, or Wednesday or Thursday in April about, on the retreat?
It, it, I just, I, yeah, I know, the dates got somehow sideways, but-
The dates were off on the date of the week, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it looked like everybody's available for the 27th, so we'll look at the 27th just one day, on the 27th, and do it then.
Aye. Bingo.
But looking at the calendar for Wednesday, we also have a budget workshop meeting. Is the meeting, I have a 6 o'clock that Wednesday for budget?
This Wednesday, 13th?
13th?
Are you looking, are you talking about 27?
I've got the 13th at 6 o'clock, is that not a meeting?
I'll check on it tomorrow, I don't-
Is this your one-on-one with Craig?
I hope it's not at 6 o'clock, I mean, it's in my calendar, so I'm going to delete that, okay? Perfect. All right, Wednesday, are any other business from staff? Any other business from council? All right, see y'all at 6:30 tomorrow morning.